Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for December 10, 2013. And Dennis Kohean allowed my Board of Selectmen, Tom Hurley and Katie Conlon. Town Administrator Marie Begon and Executive Secretary Paul Rizzi. First item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes for December 3, 2013. Your approval of December 3, 2013 minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number three, future meeting dates. So we're going to meet again on the 17th. Everybody is doing that. That's our thing.
It is, yes.
Do you have any meeting minutes for January?
We talked about trying to do like, do you have any consensus on?
Katie has responded. It's Dennis after.
Good, Mike. So December 17th and then we'll come back with.
On December 17th, we'll come back with your January meeting dates for you to approve. It's usually the first and third Tuesday of the month and then a third one put on if need.
If necessary. Tom, you wanted to do the goals and objectives.
Goals and objectives on a Saturday.
Somewhere in January.
January 11th.
Is this the meeting day tomorrow?
It's Wednesday.
Okay. Twenty fifth.
Now what date is the warrant closing? Is that Monday, the 6th?
Yes.
Yes.
So we probably, well, the previous Tuesday would be New Year's Eve. So we probably won't have a meeting between the 17th of December and January 6th.
No. I would say no.
Okay.
So probably we'll be at the 7th?
Yeah.
7th of January, 21st.
And the 11th for the goals and objectives.
Yes.
And then maybe the 12th for the goals and objectives or the 11th?
11th, yeah. Works for me.
I'm available.
Would you just be 7th and 21st?
Yes, and actually 11th.
Place to be determined for the goals and objectives?
I'm open. I can be at my office if you want it to be. Big enough.
Do you need some text to run the room?
Quick exit. That's perfect.
So December 17th, January 7th and 21st, and then on the 11th, we'll have goals and objectives.
Correct.
Okay, good. Number four on the agenda is citizen speak. I don't see anybody here for citizen speak, so we'll move right into number five, which is the approval of the 2014 common victular license renewals.
Who wants to read this one? It's very long.
I'll read it if you want. Okay, I'll move to approve the following 2014 common victulars license renewals. And I'm not sure if that's how you say victular or not, but.
Victular.
Vic. Radio copy house, 24 Central Avenue, Milton Youth Hockey Yule and Rink, Newcombe Farms, 1130 Randolph Avenue. Is it Leath?
L-E-T-H-A.
Okay, LLC, New England, DBA Brugers Bagel Bakery, 360 Granite Avenue. I'm going to kill this one, too.
Albigani Sanusi.
Albigani.
Sanusi.
Sanusi, DBA Zax Pizza and Wings, 538B Adams Street, Ho-John Inc., DBA Mr. Chan's, 534 Adams Street, Jenna's Place Two, DBA JCI, Holton's Pond Concession, Marketplace Cafe, 10 Bassett Street, Tino's Pizza, 2 Central Avenue, Stella's Luncheonette, 558 Adams Street, Starbucks Coffee, 552 Adams Street, Mildon LLC, DBA Duncan Donuts, 545 Adams Street, B&amp;D Ichiro Inc., DBA Ichiro Sushi, 538A Adams Street, Spellbound Inc., DBA Milton House of Pizza, 537 Adams Street, Atlantic Hill Construction Inc., DBA GH Bent and Company, 7 Pleasant Street, Wall Street Restaurant Group LLC, DBA 88 Warf, 88 Wall Street, Welch Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, 550 Adams Street, Milton Fuller Housing Corp., DBA Fuller Village, 1372 Brushill Road, Milton Fuller Housing Corp., DBA Fuller Village, 1399 Brushill, Blue Hill Avenue, The Plate, 27 Central Avenue, Milton Opus LLC, DBA Steel and Rye Restaurant, 95 Elliott Street.
Second, and I'm glad you had to read that one. But we've confirmed that these are just renewals with no amendments to anything.
There are no amendments. These are renewals.
Okay.
And these are, and I'm assuming the liquor license renewals are coming up?
This December.
Yes, next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number six, approval of the substitute traffic supervisor.
I'll move that we approve the recommendation of the police chief to appoint Mary E. Murray, 20 Victoria Street, to the position of substitute traffic supervisor, subject to the approval of the personnel board.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number seven, the approval of the DHS K-9 vehicle award.
I'll move to approve the acceptance of a 2014 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle for the Milton Police Department awarded as part of the regional EOD K-9 grant in the amount of $45,000.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? What, can somebody explain exactly what this grant is?
It was a grant of a vehicle, right?
They're actually giving us a vehicle?
Giving us a vehicle for the dog officer, yes, under Homeland Security. So they're giving us a grant in the amount of $45,000 for this vehicle. However, Homeland Security will be doing all of the bidding for this vehicle and they will just turn over to the town of Milton, the 2004 vehicle.
Okay. And why, what's the reason they're giving it to us?
It's the K-9. It's not the animal control.
The K-9, yes. I'm sorry, K-9.
What's the reason? Why are we getting this?
Well, the chief's letter just talks about her, the officer, having to travel to some other towns because she's the only one with ballistic experience or explosive. She's the only one who has training in that area. Needs a vehicle for it.
Guess we'll always take a free car, right?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number eight, the approval memorandum of agreement for Granite Avenue. Is Bill Clark going to be here?
I thought he was going to be here for this one. But this is to authorize the town administrator to sign the MOA with Mass Development for services for streetscape and signalization down at the Park and Ride on Granite Ave. We're studying that property now. As you know, you, the board, put together a committee to study potential uses of that site if and when the town is able to secure that piece of property. So we had a meeting with Mass Development, I want to say maybe about two months ago. Tom, you were at that meeting?
Yep.
And as a result of that meeting, Mass Development will put together eight, they did put together a proposal for streetscape and signalization analysis down in that area. And it's for a cost of approximately $7,500.
And those are free services?
And it's free services. However, if and when, if we secure the property and if we sell the property, we will have to pay that $7,500 fee back to.
So this isn't, this thing isn't like we've approved anything. It's really just looking at potential.
Potential uses for the site.
Right. So that committee is still involved in, the committee that we formed, looking at the property.
Potential redevelopment.
Is still meeting and debating. And in fact, we don't even know at this point that we have the property. I mean, it hasn't.
Right.
We don't at this point have the property.
It hasn't been surplus, yes.
That's right. We are just looking in the event that we do, obtain the property for potential redevelopment.
It's good to be proactive.
It is. I mean, when this showed up on the agenda, it was the first I had heard of it, that we were at the stage where we were potentially looking at planning for streetscape improvements. So, you know, I did call to Enri and Bill to get some more information. I thought Bill was going to be here to just give us an update on where the Granite Ave Study Committee's at and what.
We didn't realize you were going to blow through this so fast. So he's on his way. People are always asking us, what time should we come? And we're always guesstimated. So.
Could I make a suggestion? We just move over this and just kind of hold off on it until Bill gets here?
All right. We'll.
Voting it.
So we'll move on to number nine, which is the approval of the selectmen's budget. We'll come back to number eight when Bill gets here.
Maybe we should say a few words about what's in the selectmen's budget.
We'll talk about the selectmen's budget.
That we're going to be submitting to the warrant committee.
Yes, absolutely. Selectmen's budget, this is a level dollar budget and a level service budget for fiscal year 15. The employees that are under the selectmen's budget are the town administrator, assistant town administrator, town planner, executive secretary and senior admin clerk. In the level dollar budget, there are no increases in the level service budget under personnel services. I was requesting a new position and that would be for an assistant town planner position for approximately $53,000. As you know, your planning department and the projects that are coming before the one town planner that you have.
Question, on the level dollar for 15, why did it go down from?
Because the assistant, the new assistant town administrator's salary is less than what my salary was.
Okay. But we didn't keep it level, so we just reduced it below level. Okay.
This budget also may come back before you at a later date because the, there is one position in this department that had requested reclassification. I do not have the consultant's report on whether or not that position will be reclassified if and when it does come in. And if this position in our department is one of the positions to be reclassified, we're bound by the consultant's recommendation and we'll have to submit a revised budget.
And have you looked into other towns of similar population and density with regard to an assistant town planner? Do we need one?
I think we do need one. I think that with the amount of projects that are facing the town right now and the master plan and the amount of work involved, I think that it's too much for one town planner to handle. He does attend a lot of night meetings and I thought with the addition of an assistant town planner, maybe he would be able to scale back on some of those nighttime meetings and give some of those nighttime meetings, designate some of those to the assistant town planner. He does, there is a need, there is a need for support in the town planner's office, yes.
But in other towns, have you looked into other towns? Do they have assistant town planners?
Yes, the town of Brookline does. The town of Easton has a community planner. Town of Randolph, the town of Wellesley.
They have a community planner, but he's not an assistant, right?
They also have a land use planner.
In Easton?
They have three, actually, in Easton. The town of Wamif has, what's, title is principal planner, but it reports to the planning director. Some of the titles can be different, but the jobs duties and the scope are the same.
Well, our former town planner, who, you know, Bill's been here for a number of years now, so it's several years ago that he left. But when he went to Lexington, he was going in really as the junior person in the three planning department that had two more senior town planners.
In Lexington?
In Lexington. So we, I think this is one area. Some of us, I know, so many meetings happen on the same night. So some of us were at the warrant committee meeting last week and not all of us, but we made the case to the warrant committee that we're submitting a budget that has this position in it and the reasons, as Enri just stated, why we think an assistant town planner is really long overdue. Planning board members over the years have been asking for this position. I think prior boards of selectmen have been asking to fund this and it always comes down to a matter of funding. But I kind of view the town planner and the town administrator as the two people who are responsible, I think, for the big vision going forward, how we as a town move forward. And the town planner has so much on his plate from not only, everything from Henry's, the 40B projects, the East Milton Deck, but even the smaller projects like the Yule and Rink, which you could make a case, well, maybe it's planning, maybe it's really not planning, but it falls into his seat really because there's no one else, there's really no one else to do that. So I do think we need an assistant who can.
Yeah, virtually.
Can help the planner with some of these projects.
Anytime anybody thinks about putting a shovel in the ground or the town planner is involved in some respect. So it's a lot of work. And we do have a lot going on, so.
Things that we even, you know, fall off the radar from time to time, the hospice, the assisted living, all the different, the different projects that we have going on. So I think, I think the warrant committee heard us on that.
It's a case study, yes.
Obviously, they have to go through the budget process, but I think they understood.
Even assisting in getting the articles into the AG's office after the town meeting, is that correct?
Yes.
And you figure we got a housing production plan looming that is going to take a fair amount of time to, you know, try and implement and.
You're probably right. And maybe there are some things slipping through the cracks that we could do better in the planning department, which would help with an assistant.
There's also all the meetings, not only the Board of Selectmen meetings, not here at every meeting, but quite a lot of them, the planning board meetings, the sign review meetings, the master plan committee, the sign review committee. So there's just so many.
And he could.
That we can, if we can split up some of those duties and.
Right. He could potentially, with an assistant town planner, designate the assistant town planner to go to the sign review committee meetings and alleviate himself of four or five nights a week out at meetings. I agree.
In terms of general expenses?
General expenses are pretty level for, under the level dollar budget, but under the level service budget, there's a $50,000 request. And that is to conduct a comprehensive analysis, an organizational assessment of the IT department. And that's including, and that's including town side and school side, you know, the software, the hardware, and to develop a technology strategic plan going forward.
Now, how do we get across to the warrant committee that this isn't just a level service to throw it in? I mean, this is something that we want and need funded if we expect to continue to do our vision of, you know, you know.
Efficiency.
Reforming town government, but certainly modernizing town government, if you will. That this is $50,000, it could be well spent.
This was also a recommendation from your town government study committee?
Right. So I just want to make sure it doesn't kind of get overlooked, you know, and somehow that we keep the warrant committee's focus on the level service budgets as well as the level dollar budgets as opposed to the kind of what else would you add back kind of thing? This is the what else we'd add back.
And this, this is in your selectmen's budget, but it really does benefit the whole, both town side and school side, the strategic study.
Now, the only other question I had, even though it's small dollars, office supplies. We spent $2,400 actual and fiscal year 13. We're budgeting $1,300 for FY 15, so.
That's because I'm hoping that we don't need to do business cards. I think we did a big bulk business card ordering for, in letterhead. I think we also did some bulk ordering on letterhead. So I kind of was able to reduce that line item.
Okay.
What is the library building maintenance? It's only $330, but library building maintenance in 13?
We had a revolving fund now, so that's probably.
That was when we first took over the East Milton Library and we had to put an alarm system in there. And it was formerly under the library trustees and when it came under the selectmen, we had to pay for that bill.
This is the annual, the annual maintenance fee?
It was, yes, for the inspection on the East Milton Library building.
And now the.
Only forward, we don't pay for that. Out of here, we pay for it out of the revolving fund.
Is it, or is Milton Air Space paying for it?
They may be paying. I thought we continued to pay this one for the boiler, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
It's usually the owner of the building.
I thought we were paying for it out of that.
To pay the alarm system.
Okay. Shall we?
We have a motion.
I'll move that we approve and forward to the warrant committee. The FY 15 selectmen's budget in the amount of $429,128 level dollar and $532,525 for level service.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye. We'll send this down with a note to the warrant committee about the reclass and about the IT, maybe calling out the IT cost.
Yes, yes.
They heard about it last week, but it's good to reiterate it.
Moving on to number 10 is a discussion on Kennedy Carpet Sales signage request.
You may want to defer that until the town planner gets here.
I think so.
He attended the.
Is Mr. Kennedy coming as well?
I'm, no.
He's not coming.
He's not coming.
Okay. Let's move on to number 11, which is a discussion on the 2014 May town meeting articles. This is something you want to put in here, Katie? You wanted to talk about this?
I think we can take 11 and 12 together because they're so related even though they're broken out as.
Correct. I was actually going to say that. And a discussion on the Department of Revenue report.
Right.
Well, yeah. I did ask that, you know, Marie put these on the agenda and, you know, going through them last week, I was trying to think, we, obviously, we want to keep the DOR report on the radar. We have a deadline coming up for the January, in January, for the May 2014 annual town meetings. So we have a, we're going to submit, if we're planning to submit articles from this board, we need to get them in by January 6th. So I happened to just go through the DOR report to see if we could get some, I guess what I'd call low hanging fruit and see if there's something that we can, maybe take a piecemeal, have a discussion tonight, have a discussion at the next meeting. The ones that I happen to think of were maybe the audit committee, the recommendation that there be a bylaw review committee. Maybe we talk about whether to go forward at this point with the IT committee or whether to wait until we get, if it's funded, whether we get the consultant's report in time and put that off for a while. And then the other thing was at the warrant committee meeting last week, Jean Wilson, who was the former warrant committee chair, led a discussion about the OPEB trust, other post-employment benefits, which is things like health benefits and other, anything non-pension that retirees are entitled to. And we have, like all towns, we have a big looming liability for that in future years. So the question there was whether to, as the DOR recommended, whether to go forward with forming an OPEB trust or whether to just use the stabilization fund that we've been using.
Yeah, I've got some, well, thoughts and you can get your point across.
Are we talking about the audit committee first?
Well, the audit committee, well, just in general, first of all, the government study committee has requested that we kind of hold off and put any articles forward so they can study and come back with a comprehensive.
So I talked to Rick Neely today. He's the, he's the chairman of the town government study committee, as we all know. Now, they're waiting on their appointments from the town moderator. So there's, they don't yet have a quorum. There's four members, there's five to be appointed by the moderator. He's in the process of talking with people who are interested in serving, so it, maybe another week or so, from what Rick understood, that they might have those appointments in place. But that really means that that committee won't really meet until January at the earliest.
Right.
So it's sort of a balancing act. We want to try to, we want to keep the DOR report on the radar. We want to move forward as much as possible with some of these topics. But at the same time, you know, we had a lot of town meeting members who wanted the government study committee to have more independence, to have, be reconstituted, which was agreed to in October. So we want to let that process play out. And I think we're probably, when you can weigh those two things, we're probably looking at postponing, so not having at the May 2014 town meeting, any articles that really come out of the DOR report or come out of the work that the government study committee's already done. We're probably looking at October 2014, maybe May of 2015, depending on how quickly things take place, how, how the discussions on the new committee go, what they want to look at, what they might not want to look at.
Right.
So.
And I think that makes sense.
In talking with Rick, he felt that, what I mentioned to Rick, that we were working on the, you know, we had a draft of an audit committee bylaw that we did not submit to the October town meeting. I tweaked it a little bit. I know, Tom, you've been doing some research on what other audit committees, audit committee bylaws are like in other towns.
Yeah, I can talk to that a little bit and.
But overall, Rick Neely's view was really, that's one of the financial recommendations, but there's, there's a broader group of financial recommendations. And why don't we try to tackle them all together so that we're not doing one thing and then later on, something that might get recommended at a later date could have an impact on that?
Right.
So the idea was maybe the financial recommendations should be considered by the newly reconstituted government study committee, not submit any articles at this time and see where that discussion process goes, which I thought made some sense.
Yeah, I agree with that. That being said, I guess we can still talk a little bit about these things. The audit committee one, I think audit committee, I did a little bit of searching around what other towns have for audit committees and what the charges to their audit committees are. And just three specifically, just because they happen to be, you can Google them and find them. But one was Kingston's, the other one was Hingham's, and the final one was Newton's. And the, the scope of the audit committees range all over the lot, from very superficial to very in-depth. And I think, as a town, I think we have to decide what we want our audit committee to look like. Like, for example, Kingston, you know, make them recommendations of Board of Selectmen on the scope of services, the independent auditor, review on the annual financial statements and audit reports, make them recommendations in the operations where expanded scope of audits or reviews may be appropriate, reporting to town meeting on findings, ensuring independence of the auditor. And that's basically their charge.
Tom, I think it might be helpful if you, if you tell the public exactly what an audit committee should be, what their charge is.
Okay. The charge of an audit committee, it can be whatever you want to define it, from the small level of basically just selecting the auditor, reviewing the audit report and reporting, you know, perhaps reporting to town meeting or reporting to the selectmen. So on the small scale, that's what it is.
On the financials.
On the financial statements.
Of the town.
Yes. And they've been, audit committees are commonly used in publicly held companies, some, some non-publicly held companies, but, but yeah, most, the Sarbanes-Oxley thing. So audit committees are extensively used, or they have to be used, in public companies. And there's been, you know, a very good definition of what they are. The, in municipal audit committees, back in 2000, back in the late 90s, actually, but most recently in 2008, the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Offices Association, came out with a framework of what audit committee should be. And Newton's Audit Committee most closely resembles that recommendation, which is basically a, a committee that is totally independent, but does have members of, they use alderman rather than selectman, but there's two members of the Board of Aldermen on their audit committee. There's members from the public, there's, I think they have a five, five or six member board. And they're an integral part of the internal control structure of the city of Newton, that they not only select the auditor and review the audit reports, review the findings, but they actually get involved in the internal control structure. Basically, what internal control structure is, is, yeah, you, there are, you want to make sure that when you put financial statements out, that they are accurate or as accurate as they can be. And, you know, as an auditor, we call them fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. You also want to make sure that the assets exist, that they're not being wasted, there's no fraud. And the way you accomplish this is by an internal control structure. Part of that internal control structure is you have a control environment, which is setting the tone at the top, which is those in charge of governance, the selectmen, the audit committee, getting the word down to that, you know, we expect, you know, we expect everybody to be trustworthy and we expect everybody to abide by laws.
Is this as a result of the Enron disaster in 2010?
Some of it is. I mean, some of it's been around for years and years and years, but more heightened and more formalized since, since the Enron, you know, things. But, I mean, they're, you know, as long as public companies have been around, there have been, you know, been fraud and.
And do these auditors, do they come under the same scrutiny as, from municipalities as they would for public companies?
I would say, it's a difficult question to answer. Is the auditor, is riskier or come under as much scrutiny?
Like, there's a recommendation that you change your auditors every five years.
Yes.
In, in public companies.
Yeah. There is not in private companies, there is not right now in municipal, although, you know, there have been some, when you do an audit of a, of a government entity that's under what's called yellow book or government auditing standards, the GAO has studied perhaps auditor rotation, but every time it's come up, they have not gone that far. So, so there is no auditor rotation other than in publicly traded companies. It's strongly suggested that it happen, so.
DOR report recommends it as well.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if they got it from the Sarbanes-Oxley recommendations?
It could be.
Could be.
But, you know, and GFOA recommends it, you know, that it's good practice to, from time to time, rotate your auditor. So, like I said, Newton's is, can I just read some of the things? Let's see, compliance reviews, so here's some of the things, just the main headings on Newton's. The duties of the Financial Audit Advisory Committee, will advise the Board, acting through the Finance Committee, let's see, assist in the oversight of registered public accounting firms, assisting in resolving disagreements between city and auditor, helping pre-approve audit and non-audit services, advising the Board of appropriate requests for funding from the Mayor to retain independent counsel accountants, the financial statements, review the external financial statements. The internal control, evaluate areas of significant risk or exposure facing the city, assess the steps city officials have taken or proposed to take to minimize such risks. That's called risk assessment. External audit reviews, review the performance of the external auditors, review and confirm the independence of the external auditors, establish a regularly-scheduled periodic discussion whether to rebid, review with city officials, the external audit, the results of the audit. You know, so like I said, it gets quite a bit involved, and it really takes a, an Audit Committee that...
Need experience.
That is experienced. You would need at least one or two experienced people that really understand.
Probably one, two accountants anyway.
Yeah, you would, you would need that. So, again, we have to decide if that's what we want or need.
Katie, you recommend a three instead of five?
That comes from the Government Study.
That came from the DOR report, but I think we should just clarify a couple of things. One is that we have an existing Audit Committee. This question is making it a bylaw committee because it's, the Audit Committee's not written into the bylaws, it's just a committee that's existed historically. So we have a committee, in fact, the financials for the year ended last June 30th will be, have been audited, we need to have a meeting with the auditors. I think that's the final stages of the report of being written.
Yes.
Do we have any indication of when we'll have the auditors? We have outside auditors, which is Powers and Selvin, we're in an exact, a second year of a three-year contract with them. So we have outside auditors, we have an Audit Committee. For anybody watching who's thinking, you know, that this doesn't exist and that we're looking to create it, that's not the case.
Right, we do have...
We're just talking about putting this into the bylaws and making this a bylaw committee.
And maybe expanding the scope.
And maybe expanding the scope and revisiting some of the details that we'd like to put. I think probably the Government Study Committee would like to get that research that you've done, Tom, and take a look at that. So does it make sense to both of you then that, you know, what Mr. Neely suggested?
Yeah, I believe it does.
Give them some time to take a look at this, not get ahead of ourselves.
The only thing I think we should, we should look at is the OPEB funding, because I don't see that as really, I mean, I know it is a DOR recommendation, we've been talking about that already, about whether to fund or not. I think, I think we need more research into it.
I talked with Amy Dexter today on this one, just to get her thoughts on it. And it came up at the Warren Committee meeting, Gene Wilson put together a nice summary of what a couple of other towns, I think Wellesley and Arlington, what they're doing that are things that we might want to think about. But the town accountant's take on this right now is that we have a stabilization fund for OPEB that we've funded a little bit, it's, there's a balance of what, around $300,000 or $400,000 in it now.
Yeah, if you take $300,000 and if you add, if you add some of the free cash to it as the recommendation from the Warren Committee is, now you're talking, you're talking $800,000 or so, that's enough to establish a trust fund.
Yeah, and that's what...
And then on top of that, if you transfer in each year, we are funding, yeah, I don't know how many millions of dollars, but quite a, you know, quite a few dollars for retirees' health benefits. And as was suggested by Parker when he came into, if you flow those through the trust fund, even though they go through and back out, part of this is a numbers game, that you're looking to reduce that liability on the balance sheet, and to the extent you fund your OPEB liability, then the portion that's funded is discounted at a smaller interest or higher interest rate, actually, because there's the assumption that you can invest the money...
More flexibly.
More flexibly and get a higher return on the money. So that there is some logic to funding. The downside is perhaps there's a cost to funding, too, and, you know, that costs me an administrative charges, and I think we have to look at what those administrative charges are. There are some experts out there that I think we should look to get in and talk to and go from there.
And that was the town accountant's advice, that the stabilization fund right now is not large enough to consider going to a trust fund, but sooner rather than later, we might be at the point where it makes financial sense to go to a trust fund, so, because we will have to pay some administrative fees, as you mentioned, Tom, and...
Yeah, I'd like to find out what those administrative fees are.
It would make more sense to do that if we had more money in a trust fund, so that was Amy's advice.
I'd like to get an estimate on, because, I mean, I've seen it funded before and I see what it does to the liabilities, even partial funding, and it does substantially reduce that OPEB cost. So I would like to have somebody come in and just talk to us about what the potential is of funding, you know, how expensive, because there are several, you can, you can jump in with the states, the state has an OPEB trust fund, and they opened it up, there's actual general, I forget which general law it is, that actually opens up the state's trust fund to municipalities, so that you don't have to form your own trust fund, you can be part of the state's.
So that's worth exploring.
Yeah.
What you can.
The other thing that Amy mentioned today, and she said this at the Warren Committee meeting last week, too, because the request from the Warren Committee was, you know, should they consider submitting an article for an OPEB trust? It wouldn't make sense for the Warren Committee, which has to review articles, to submit one, and, you know, we kind of advised them that, in answering a follow-up question, they want to know, is this important, is this a priority for the Board of Selectmen, that we're keeping OPEB in mind, and we assured them that it was. And I think that satisfied them, that there didn't need to be an article submitted by the Warren Committee, but it sounds like, and I'm guessing, I'm just asking, are we all in agreement, that we won't submit an article for an OPEB trust fund at this time, but we will have a placeholder article, I shouldn't call it a placeholder article, but a boilerplate. There's a stabilization fund already in existence, so that will be part of the articles that are already submitted as budget articles. And we don't need to submit anything in addition to that.
I think it's premature to, at this point, I don't think we have enough information to be able to submit an article, but I think we should move in that direction.
Maybe for the fall town meeting.
For the fall town meeting or next...
Or next May.
One of the two.
Yeah. And Amy did say that the Standard and Poor's, when they had their call for the bond rating, that Standard and Poor's was pleased with the stabilization fund and understood that we didn't have enough to, in the fund right now, in order to have a trust, but that having the stabilization fund was a step in the right direction.
Right, right.
So we'll hold off on that. We in agreement with that?
Yes, we won't submit an article for an OPEB trust fund, but we will have the stabilization fund article. And then the Warren Committee can decide how they want to recommend funding for it.
Now, did you want to talk about the bylaw, town bylaws?
I had some thought on that, and I think what we have to discuss and discuss with the Government Study Committee is, the DOR report indicated, two ways to do it, number one, it doesn't have to go through town meeting as an article, it could be a Selectmen-appointed committee. If you're going to make a change to the bylaws, obviously, it has to go through town meeting. So the first stage would be studying and codifying the bylaws we have. Some of them are vague, but laws are vague all the time.
Right.
And whether a vague law, you write regulations to explain the vagaries in the law.
Our bylaws have no index, there's some other...
Right, there are things that definitely...
They haven't been updated in decades, so...
Right.
They've been amended over time, but they're written by different people, they're not all in the same voice, there's just some inconsistencies probably in them, so...
Right, so those things should be corrected and they should be codified.
Do you want to create a committee?
Well, we could create the committee, but again, I think we should wait for the Government Study Committee to weigh in on the whole thing.
And I think, do we, again, do we want, do we want to create the committee, or given that some of it, because if a committee is created while the Government Study Committee, as a three constituent, is looking at, should the Board of Selectmen be five members rather than three members, should be, what should the form of town government be? If we have the Government Study going down one track and the Bylaw Committee revising the bylaws in their current, you know, with the substance, the current substance of them changing the format and looking at rewarding some of them, then the work of a Bylaw Committee that might be in place now...
In vain.
Could be impacted by what comes out of the Government Study Committee. So it's all related, but I also think there's a question, should we just submit this and let this be a moderator-appointed committee at some point if we want to go forward with one of them?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I guess it may be able on either way, but I'm still convinced that, that somebody should explore regulations as opposed to writing all the detail that you have to write to. There's always going to be questions about, well, what did you mean by this particular bylaw? Well, that should be a regulation explaining the bylaw, and to a degree, we have it, we have it in documents that are all over the place, that there, you know, there are job descriptions that explain things, you know, there may be bylaws, but, you know, and certainly policies and procedures that kind of explain what we meant by the bylaw, but, you know, some of those should be, again, codified and, you know...
That can be done, we did it with the school committee a few years ago, and we updated the, every bylaw, and they brought it in front of the school committee probably six or seven times. It got done. I think we can do the same here.
It sounds like we might have a consensus that we should hold off, not submit an article now.
Hold off.
Let the Government Study Committee process play out a little bit, see what changes might be recommended from that, and then consider the Bylaw Committee, maybe even for November, if, you know, depending on how quickly things take place. The only other one I had suggested was the IT Committee, and we did have one at one time, it was a moderator-appointed committee, it's been inactive. Now, we're asking for $50,000 in our budget for an IT consultant. You know, I think the recommendation that came out of the Government Study Committee last fall was that...
We reconvene the IT Committee?
Well, that the consultant was probably more valuable at first, anyway, rather than an IT Committee. I guess the question for us is, do we think there's still a need to have an IT Committee, possibly either work with the consultant or implement what comes out of the consultant's report, if we're able to fund that?
Yeah, I guess the real question is, is how strong your IT department is. If your IT department's strong enough, then I'm not sure you need a committee on top of it, but where they're not, then, yeah, you know, so...
And again, this could be a committee that we appoint rather than going through the town meeting process, but...
Right, right.
So should we wait and see what happens with the funding through the Warren Committee of the $50,000?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
Request?
I think so.
Okay. Sounds fine to me.
Good work, Katie. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
We had to identify some things to talk about, so, I don't know that there's more in that report that we want to talk about for next week, I think we might have a pretty full agenda of items for the next meeting.
Yes.
Yep.
But going forward, I do think during spring, even if we're not, even if we don't have an article submitted, we should keep the DOR report on the agenda periodically to make sure that we're focused on it.
Yep.
Sometimes these things sit on a shelf and never get, nothing ever gets implemented. The only thing we've done so far is changed the meeting dates to Tuesday night, so, there's 33 other recommendations, I think.
True.
Okay, you good?
Back to eight.
Yeah, we'll go back to number, actually, number 10, because Mr. Kennedy is here, we've...
Okay.
Discussion on the Kennedy Carpet Sales signage request.
Okay.
You can come on up to the table. Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Are you...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Yes, members of the Board, Frank Marinelli, I'm an attorney at 439 Washington Street in Braintree.
Frankie's my landlord, so, many years ago.
I hope a good one. I've been involved with Jay and his company, Kennedy Carpet, for several years, and Jay contacted me today and came in and told me a little bit about the request, so just wanted to present to the Board some of the basis that we feel there's a reasonable need and no substantial detriment for what is being requested and the materials that you have before you. Jay, in 2007, received Zoning Board of Appeals approval to take what was really a dilapidated site and create a beautiful building, that I think he did to his credit with gables and soffits and all kinds of materials that those of us in the development business are familiar with. He did a great job and he invested pretty close to $2 million. It hasn't worked out as a retail location, and back when we were before the Board in 2008, we made the distinction of East Milton Square and some of the requirements that you like to see in East Milton Square with the gooseneck lighting, and you have the synergy of retailers next to one another, you have on-street parking, you have pedestrian-friendly venue. You don't have that at this site, this is a very unique, almost turnpike site. It's a site that has an off-ramp to the south of it, and then almost immediately an on-ramp again to the north of it. So it's a very unique site, it's been very difficult to deal with and run a successful location for Kennedy Carpet. We have an opportunity after all of the investment and the years that Jay has attempted to use it as a retail facility for carpets. I mean, he's been in business for 35 years, employs 60 people. He's done, he's kept people employed during the economic downturns. I think he deserves a lot of credit for what he's done with the building and what he's tried to do with his business over there for retail sales. We have the opportunity with Sleepy's, the Mattress Professionals, they have 850 stores, they want to lease the building. Jay can tell you a little bit more about the negotiation with Sleepy's, but they want to have the channel signs, the channel letters on the front of the building that simply say, "Sleepy's, the Mattress Professionals."
Will those be illuminated, or will they just be light shining on them?
My understanding is that they're not going to be illuminated.
There's no plan to illuminate them.
Okay, just a light shining on them?
Yeah, we didn't even, you know, we may eventually put a light in the soffit, but there's not, they didn't ask for that, they're...
But they're not interior lit?
No, not at all. And, I mean, the bottom line is, I get, it's a tough spot, I've got people that, I can't tell you how many times people have driven to my warehouse in Weymouth that live in Milton that said, "It's easier to come here." It's tough, you know, so, and it's like, I can't find it, people that live in Milton, I can't find...
You don't want Sleepy's to hear this.
Pardon me? I know. But, I mean, but the bottom line is, I think that they've done a beautiful layout, I mean, it's a lot of square footage of letterage and all that, but I mean, where it is, it's not going to affect anybody, I mean, I think it looks nice. And it's in, it's, it's the same lettering they do on all their buildings, that's their lettering package. If I can't get that approved, I can't, I can't get Sleepy's.
The roof, the rooftop sign, is that going to remain LED or...
Yes, but it will, it will be, it won't be, it's only going to have, like, it'll say "Sleepy's," and they have it now saying "Sleepy's, the Mattress Professionals" underneath. Once they lay that up there, they're going to find out that they might want to do "Sleepy's" and then do "The Mattress Professionals," because that's not going to work. You'll never be able to read "The Mattress Professionals" underneath the word "Sleepy's" on the digital sign. So, I mean, at most, they're going to have, like, two messages, "Sleepy's, The Mattress Professionals." You know, they're not going to advertise sales or anything like that, because, you know, that's in the deal here, that, you know, we can't do that, and I'll make sure that they don't do that, and we'll put that right in the lease.
So it is an LED light now, but in this picture...
It just doesn't look like LED.
It just doesn't look like it, but it would be an LED light.
Oh, it is, you've never seen it?
Oh, no, it's in the center, but it's just a picture here.
The picture here looks like...
Oh, it's the same, it's the same sign, but that's the type of coloring they're going to use, they want to use a white background with a red letter, so it might not even look like an LED sign.
Which is actually better.
Right, and the LED technology, even though it's still considered somewhat new, the resolution is good, and I think, as the Chairman pointed out, the colors here are actually probably better than...
Than blue.
Yeah, with the white and red. The relief, we would respectfully suggest, is modest, because even on the channel letters, normally you'd have two feet for the linear feet, which is about 34, 34 feet, 34 feet, 10 inches, so you'd have close to 70 square feet. The letters that we're proposing are about 66 square feet, as you see on the chart. It's just the fact that we have the previously-approved LED, which in itself is less than 50 square feet. I mean, it's not like some of the signage that you see at retailers. We've, you know, done signage, signage that has four-foot letters in expressway locations, three-foot letters, these are two-and-a-half-foot letters on the, on the channel letters, and as we pointed out, they're not illuminated internally.
So there's no lighting on them at all?
Well, as Jay said, they may have some soffit lighting or they may put something on it.
I think most you do is put something up in under the soffit, they just kind of, you know, drown a little light across the front.
I think that's better than interior lit.
Yeah, they haven't even asked for anything like that, and, you know, it's...
I think that was a concern of some neighbors across the street, that the interior lit lights would... interior lit lights would...
Oh, nothing like that.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons that we allowed the moving of the LED sign from where it was.
Because the neighbors didn't like it, yeah.
Yeah, it was shining across into their...
Right.
Is there a reason why you didn't do this, Jay, for your building? Like, on the, is this the west portion of the building?
Yeah, because it was...
That is. That's a Wesley facade.
Too many letters, it was too much square footage of signage. I wanted to do that, but it's like, you know, I opted for just getting the LED sign, 'cause I thought that would be the end-all, be-all. You know, and I, I came back, when I moved the LED sign, and asked if I could put the lettering up, and I wanted to put the Kennedy Carpet on, and they said, "No."
I mean, to me, it makes sense to put it there, because, like, you're facing the highway.
Correct.
You know, it does, you're really not in anybody's backyard there.
Now, would this be a...
It's not lit.
Would this be a fixed, well, yeah, I don't have a huge problem with the, the sign, the non-lit sign. The LED sign, would that be, would, would that be kept just as is? In other words, it wouldn't be flashing, it wouldn't be changing?
As I said before, if it, they have it now, it says, "Sleepy's, The Mattress Professionals." I think they might wanna, you'll never be able to see that, "The Mattress Professionals", and see the Sleepy's. They, so they may wanna do Sleepy's, and then, you know, maybe 10 seconds later, "The Mattress Professionals." But that's all. I mean, they're not gonna advertise sales or, or anything like that, you know.
I think that's what you're asking, Tom, they're gonna advertise sales and all that?
No, 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 no.
Well, there's two concerns. Number one, because if you're facing the highway, just the flashing of it, and, and, you know, the kind of billboard appearance of it, you know, flashing, if it were just fixed, you know, saying Sleepy's all the time, I think it would be preferable, but...
But I'm only saying from, they, at this point, think it's just gonna look like that, but I know, they're never gonna be able to put out the message, "The Mattress Professionals", on that sign, you'd never be able to read it. You know, if they really want to put that message out, they're gonna have to put it on the next line, you know, they're gonna have to change it. I mean, we gotta change, and it's showing four or five different messages now in two different colors, so, I mean, it's, and easy, like you, like you said, these are more easier going colors, you know, there's gonna be less messages.
What was the recommendation of the sign committee?
They were pretty much, they were all right with it, but as long as they took the LED down, but that's an old battle that they want to win, you know, the way I look at it, they were...
I mean, you had the LED, the LED is approved, it's there.
Exactly, exactly, yeah.
Now, was it the Board of Selectmen that originally approved the LED sign?
Yes.
Or was it the sign?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the Board of Selectmen privately beyond the board?
Correct, yeah.
Well, the sign committee can't really approve anything...
No, they just make recommendations.
Outside of what their, the signed handbook allows them to approve.
Right.
They can say whether they like something or not, I guess, or...
I would say that, you know, what you said, Tom, if there isn't a big change-up in the LEDs, like a, what do you call it, a digital signage, you know, where something is gonna flash up every 10 minutes, it's kind of, I think it's disrupting to, and we got some phone calls on that, just, that's the reason I bring it up.
Yeah.
You know, when it changes, when you're advertising something, people say it's not that attractive.
Oh, well, it's gonna actually come down a lot, because I've got four different messages up there right now.
Right.
But, I mean, since they proposed it this way...
Right, should it be written into the lease with them, then?
I would be inclined to do that.
That they just have the sign just like this, and not...
Yeah, that it not change.
Not be two signs.
That it just be a fixed sign.
One fixed LED.
A fixed LED sign. That says, "Sleepy's, The Mattress Professional."
I can, you know, if you guys want to go along with the rest of it, I can try to put, I can put that in the lease, and if that's the only thing I gotta come back with, if I have a problem, that'd be good, because, you know, if you guys can approve the rest of it and say, as long as they don't change the message in the LED, other than what, you know, I'd be willing to try to sign a lease with that.
Well, I think we should probably, we'd have to go in our vote, and then it would go in the lease, right? I mean, the lease is between you and Sleepy's, but in terms of our vote, this, this memo from when the town planner is here, Bill Clark, maybe he might want to speak to some of this, but his memo does say, "The Sign Review Committee voted the rooftop sign be removed and that the lettering on the front be reduced by 10%." And the words "Mattress Professionals" fit under Sleepy's, not, the text not be extended on the left or the right of Sleepy's.
I know, we had that discussion last night, and, and you're talking 24 letters under eight letters. If you drop that thing 8%, and put "The Mattress Professionals"...
You're not gonna say it.
Yeah, I mean, these, these guys...
Unless you were to do it on two lines.
It's, it's not gonna, it's, it would just ruin the whole effect of what they're trying to do.
The, the size of the letters for a highway location, again, I think Sleepy's being two feet, 24 inches, and then the Mattress Professionals being nine and a quarter inches is, is, is pretty modest for a highway location.
I think it's, for me personally, it's okay, and it's even better that it's not lit. I had to go through the same thing in Easton, to be quite truthful. And they rejected me because it was interior lit. I ended up putting goosenecks on it, and it actually worked out better in the end. But, and it was classier looking, I think.
Right.
I don't know what the board feels, but would you put some, I think it's kind of harsh to not allow them to change the sign up on the roof at least once every so often, if they have a sale or something, you know? Not every 10 minutes, or not every day, or maybe once a week, or something like that, or...
But they've only asked for, for the way it appears on this last page, right?
Yeah, but I think, I think when they lay it out and they actually put it up there, you're not gonna be able to word, read the word "The Mattress Professionals." So, they may want to go Sleepy's, then they may, you know, 10 seconds, "The Mattress Professionals." But if they use it, you know, the colors are gonna be toned down, the amount of messages is gonna be a quarter of what it is now, I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah, well, like I said, I'd be willing to vote for it if it just said, "Sleepy's, The Mattre," and, and it was just fixed, LED fixed.
Yeah, I would like it to say that as well, because it is less distracting, and...
Yeah.
It looks better. It, I think, for aesthetical, just the aesthetical purposes for the neighborhood, if it's just, if that's all they're asking for, and if, if it's just one sign that's not gonna change every five or 10 minutes, then that would be preferable.
But that's what I was saying, could they change it every couple of days or something? I mean, it's, it's a, it's a commercial building that we want filled.
Well...
And we want it to...
Yeah, I was gonna make that point, too.
We want it to remain filled.
I mean, I think that's really an important point, is that, you know, you want to reduce, if not eliminate, the roster of empty buildings, and especially, I think, in town where about 35 acres out of 8,400 is owned for business, so it's, you know, this is, and, and as we've tried to distinguish, this is a unique site in that it's not even part of the village, it's, it's really out there on its own. Right now, as Jay pointed out in the prior decision in '08, there was the ability, I think, to change four times, and carpet sales...
It changes every eight seconds right now.
But I think what we're seeing is we've gotten some complaints about that, from the neighborhood, or from...
Well, I don't think it's from, I don't know if it's in the neighborhood, because it doesn't point at the neighborhood, it just points towards Quincy, now.
Maybe, as he said, if we could have Sleepy's and, and just maybe the Mattress Professionals following that up, that, I think the interval is what matters, 15-second interval, or nothing that, that, that is, is too, too quick. We did the LED signs at Hanover Mall, part of their renovation and redevelopment of their sign package, and, and they have a, an LED component down there that is done really well, and was approved by the, the board. And, and the interval was an important thing at the front, where, where the entrances are. So, I don't think that two, the ability to do two different signs is, is, is really a, a big request on the part of a retailer. We're trying to have somebody be successful in a building where it's been vacant.
Is it vacant now?
Yeah.
Can we ask the town planner whether he has anything to add based on, were you at the meeting last night, Bill?
I was.
Give us your thoughts on this, or what the sign review committee's discussion might have been?
They came back with, they wanted 90% of the size on picture three, which was the unlit sign.
Yep.
But now, last night it was unlit, now it's, it's going to be lit. The issue was to take the Mattress Professionals, shrink it to make it the same size, so it would look just like the one that's on the picture of the LED sign.
You talking about the one on the roof?
The one that's on the roof, the Mattress Professional fits under Sleepy's.
Yep.
And that's what they asked for, if they were going to put something on the west side, that that, that those letters be made to fit underneath Sleepy's. If you take Sleepy's and the Mattress Professional, and you put it all together, you measure the whole thing out, it is greater than what our guidelines allow.
I think it would look more awkward, actually, if, if the Mattress Professionals was less in length of, of what the Sleepy's is.
Look at picture five.
Picture, picture five, is there...
It's the last one, that's the LED.
Yep.
You'll go back there.
It's not gonna work. They're never gonna, they're not gonna have that words, "The Mattress Professionals," on that LED sign, under the word Sleepy's. It might look good on a piece of paper, but when you put it on the sign, it's not gonna work, 'cause I've tried all different sized letters on the sign.
Okay.
And, you know, they're not gonna end up putting the words, "The Mattress Professionals", underneath the word Sleepy's on the LED sign.
Can you say that again, Bill? What, what are they looking for? With the Mattress Professional?
They want, see how Mattress Professional fits under Sleepy's?
Yeah, they want that smaller.
If you're going to do picture number three, instead of having it extend, you've got "the" in the back end of "professionals" that go beyond.
Mm-hmm.
You want it pulled in, so that it sits directly under Sleepy's.
Right now, that's a nine-inch, those are nine-inch lettering?
Yep.
How small would you have to make that lettering to make it, would you be able to read it?
Well, they were actually looking for Sleepy's to be...
Be smaller, too.
Even smaller, too.
So, the Mattress Professionals...
Because last night, the, the only lit sign was going to be the LED sign.
Yeah, and we still don't know whether, well, this is not gonna be lit itself, whether it's gonna be illuminated.
But that's still lit.
Yeah.
The roof one is still lit?
No, this one here.
The front one.
If you put lights in your soffit and you light up the sign, you've lit up the sign.
Okay.
Can you describe, where's the soffit? I don't know what that term, is that from the roof line?
That's the piece that's underneath.
Underneath, okay. So, the light would shine up onto the Sleepy's sign.
Yeah, but right now, that's not proposed, right?
It's not proposed, and I'm, I'm not gonna push it. If they, if they push it, I guess I'll have to come back here and speak to you about it.
Right now, this sign that's proposed does not have lighting.
Does not have light.
Correct. But that's, but that's what you said, you said, "We put lights in the soffit." You added that one in, and that was exactly what Ray said last night.
I get kinda, I get kinda talked into that.
I know.
I was there from the other end of the table, saying, "You really need to get some lights up there."
I know.
Well, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, but...
Ray, Ray said last night, "If we approve that sign, and we say that it's unlit, at some point in time, somebody's going to light it." And that was what he said last night to you, and you were like, "I don't have it down here, that it's to be lit." But then, right now, it turned into being lit, so, it happened.
But it's, when you think about it, though...
Trying to do exact business.
Lighting, lighting the sign and actually putting lights in the soffit, so the face of the building is lit up, are two different things. You wouldn't actually be lighting the sign, you'd be washing the face of the building with light. You know, it wouldn't be like those gooseneck things lighting the sign, it would be lights in the soffit that washed down along the front of the building. And I was, I was driving by the building last night, I said, "All the soffit should have lights in it, the building should be, like..."
You're right, and those washed lights actually look attractive.
The light would wash down over the building...
Yep.
And, you know, and just make the building stand out like, you know, like the beautiful building that it is, and you're, without being bright, or being hell of a spotlights, just a, just washing down from under the, from under the eaves.
What, white fluorescent, white what?
Yeah, just...
White fluorescent?
Yeah.
And Jay...
Yeah, go ahead, Katie.
Jay, what sort of hours would you be thinking about for lighting, if this should come up? I mean, would this just be, you know, end at 11 or midnight, or is this all night long?
Oh, no, no, not all night long. Yeah, shut them down, you know, the store closes at 10, shut the lights off at 11. The, the, the digital sign stays on all night.
But I know they get the LED one, yeah, but just on the front of the story, if, if there were to be a request for that, you think it would, it'd end around 10 or 11 at night?
Yeah, sure. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna offer it, and if they start, if all of a sudden they have to have it, you know, my big concern is getting somebody in the building, I mean, it's, it's a monster.
And this is a credit tenant, so, I mean...
These guys are, you know, I have a couple of friends that leased them, and they're just awesome tenants.
Yeah. And it sounds like the reason, I mean, Tom, you know the history of this, the reason the, the sign moved, the LED sign moved from the front of the building up to the roof was because of the, the over in Sheldon Street or State Street?
There were two reasons. One reason was Jay came in to us and said, you know, "Look, it doesn't really do me a lot of good to have it, because you can't read it from the highway when it's on the side of the..." It was originally on the side of the building here...
Yeah.
And, and it did shine across the street into the residential community, so the residents were complaining about it.
Right, and that's, that's the list.
And it didn't really meet Jay's needs either, because you couldn't read it from the highway. So, even though putting a rooftop sign is against our bylaws, it was less obtrusive to the neighbors, that, I mean, that was our thought process. You know, it was just shining...
And it worked out, because the neighbors, you haven't had any complaints about the sign since we moved it, right?
Right, not that I'm aware of.
And this, over here, this is another commercial building, so the sign really faces another commercial building in the, in the highway.
It's Quincy.
Yeah.
But it's a commercial area, it's not, it's not a residential, the residents is behind it, but, so it was really the concern for the front, when the LED sign was on the front of the building, was the neighbors over here on Sheldon and State Street, and these side streets here.
Right, exactly.
So, if you were to light the front of the building, Jay, that shouldn't be, have any impact, really, on the neighbors on the side of the highway.
As long as it's not shining out, yeah.
It's not shining out.
It's not a shiny, it would just be like a, it'd be less obtrusive than a streetlight, it would be, you know, a fraction of a streetlight.
I think, as he said, it's washing the building.
It's an accent to the building.
There are many, many buildings you see that have accents and aesthetics by way of wall packs and wall lighting, and I think that's similar to what you're talking about. In Hingham, for example, we did the CVS down there, and they have halo lighting behind the letters, and at the Shipyard, and that's part of their bylaw, but they have lighting, but it's kind of halo lighting. So this is really even beneath that, because it's not directly a lighting of the letter, either by halo or internal channel, channel letter.
Actually, when I left last night, I spoke to the real estate broker when I was driving, and he brought it up, and then, you know, he said, "Well, are we gonna be able to get some lights on, on the front of the building after I left, Bill?" And I, cause they, they had never, and then, you brought it up, and I said, "Yeah, probably would be, but I'm, I'm not gonna put it in there unless they push for it." And if it, if it is, it's just gonna be like a wash type thing, you know?
I don't think the issue, to be honest, is the, is the lighting on the front of the building, because it'll either be washed down, or it'll be something else, but it won't be a digi, a digital board like this.
Right, exactly.
I think the issue is the digital board.
That it'd not be digital and not be a lit sign either. You know, in other words, the, the letters not be...
Right, well, the thing is, like, it's red and yellow and blue right now, and it changes every few seconds, and it's just not attractive.
Right.
You know? I think that's what we're trying to get away from. But if it's just gonna be Sleepies, the Mattress Professional, I'm fine with that.
If, if we can, if we can write it...
I mean, if you can work it out with them...
The only other part that goes against the guidelines is that, in the guidelines, it says that the face of the sign should not be seen, you should only see the letters. So if you go down and you look at the Shell Station, when you see the Shell Station sign, you see the Shell. When you see Dunkin' Donuts, all you see is Dunkin' Donuts, the letters, you don't see the sign. When you see the new sign for Citizens, which is being made right now, you're going to see Citizens Bank, you're not going to see a green face. The green face is, you know, it doesn't meet the guidelines, and it's, it's being replaced.
So you're talking about the white face?
The white's not supposed to show at night.
You know, we had that discussion in 2008, and it's, you know, with respect to, all due respect to Mr. Clark, in 2008, we, we had distinguished the site as a turnpike site that really had to connect with the Route 93 customer base. So I think that what Bill is mentioning is, are really more towards the East Milton Square sites. This is really a unique site in terms of its challenges, and I think that that sign, the way it exists, is, is the way it was approved. It really isn't much that we can do in terms of the LED sign. We can agree to keep it static. I think as Jay has said, that's what's been submitted to you, but...
I mean, the only other alternative to that would, would be red on black, and that would look pretty ugly.
Well, it would, the background would be black, Sleepies would be red, the stars would be yellow, and the Mattress Professionals would be white.
White, yeah.
That, but that doesn't go with their...
That's not their logo.
Their logo.
That is their logo.
I think it's the favor...
Well, the logo is black lettering rather than white, you know, a white face rather than white lettering. I think that's what Jay's saying.
Well, if that's there, maybe I'm missing something, which you just said.
But, yeah, cause this is, so, it's a white background with black lettering, so if you were to not allow a white background and put the, the Mattress Professionals in white, that would change the look of the brand, the company brand and logo.
On their black lettering?
Yes.
I'd have to see another one. Out of 850, I'm sure they've got one somewhere.
And they, they've also got a proposal for, you know, like 45 to 60 days of grand opening board, or, you know, those flag things, did you see those?
Forty-five days on the grand opening.
Is that part of the...
That's part of the package.
Of the package, okay.
Page four.
Well, and that's just flag bunting, right, in the sign over the window?
Just temporary. On either side of grand opening.
Yeah.
Grand opening?
Grand op, just grand opening with bunting on either side.
Yep.
There's a description on the left.
Is there any issue with the 45 days? I mean, that, that doesn't...
That meets our, that meets our zoning.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that didn't strike me as anything we, you know, would be a problem.
Looks a lot better than that building available sign.
So, are the, it seems to me that the consensus of the, that the board seems to be on, on board with the lighting at the front, or the, the sign at the front, but the issue seems to be whether we can have the digital sign change up every few often, or, or keep it fixed.
I prefer it fixed.
Yeah, I think I'd be okay with the front the way it is. How, how big are these letters, the Mattress Professionals?
Two, two...
Nine inches.
Twenty-four feet. That's 24 feet.
They're nine and a quarter inches on the Mattress Professionals and...
In height?
Yeah. And 24 inches on Sleepies.
Is that an actual star between Y and S? Yellow stars?
That's part of the logo.
Yeah.
On their website, you see that it says the Mattress Professional, the same...
Yeah, right here.
Size as Sleepies. It's actually smaller.
See that, Tom? Yep.
It all depends on...
But that's the same here, it's...
How big the Sleepies is and what you're...
Right.
Who you're trying, you know, and, are you in like a mall where everybody's walking around, or are you on a highway where the cars are going by, you know? I mean, that's not, those are not big letters, and I think they, they look a lot better, bigger on this piece of pa, paper than they're gonna look on that building.
I can't see many pictures, but here's at least a picture of a Sleepies, and it doesn't say the Mattress Professionals underneath it, it just says Sleepies. That's what a lot of them do. Is that one there?
So what's the wish of the board?
Well, what's the timing on this? You know, where are you at in your lease negotiations with them?
Uh, I'm thinking that, you know, they could be hanging signs within, you know, 45 days or something like that. And we'd be signing a lease, you know, within a week or two. And probably opening within 60 days. They, they've been around, they've been sniffing around since August, you know, and they've been obviously doing a lot of work. They took these pitches, and they, you know, did all the sign work, and their people from Florida have been sending me emails, and they've done floor plans, and, you know, they're, and there's, the, the beauty of the building to them is they don't have to do anything to it.
Nothing's brand new.
They can just move right in, they don't have to do a thing. So they can move in quick, and so that's what they're...
Turnkey.
Yeah, it seems, I mean... Here's just images, you know, here, here's one here that just, that one says the Mattress Professional, there's other images that just say Sleepies, here's one says Sleepies, the Mattress Professional beside it, here's one's just Sleepies. So it doesn't appear that they have any one, here's another one, just Sleepies. One here's just Sleepies, one there's just Sleepies. That one does have the Mattress Professionals under it. That one's just Sleepies. They don't appear to have any one.
Actually, look at this one. See the...
Here?
The Mattress Professionals is, is smaller than the...
Right, yeah, it, it is in many cases.
But I think the, the design of this building, with the, the way the roof is designed, it probably looked better to have it go beyond the two S's.
Kinda goes with the...
Yeah, the contour of the, of the roof.
Right.
Yeah, I, but there is precedent for them, obviously several other precedents, if those photos look like they're all different locations, for not having the Mattress Professionals under their name on, on every building. And they're proposing it be in two places here. One of which, you know, Jay, you're suggesting is probably on the LED light, would have to be a flashing light in order to make it legible from the street.
So... You think you could sell it to them with...
They can't change the sign.
Change the sign?
Yeah.
I think that would satisfy you, Tom, right?
You guys will approve everything else, I'll put it in a lease that they only get one message up there, and they can't change the message. That's why they showed it to me, so they should accept that.
Well, that's true, yeah. Did they mention at all about changing it?
No.
Okay.
So, yeah, I...
But I think we also wanna make sure that, you know, if there is gonna be light at the front of the building, that it's only during, while the store's open at night.
Yeah, that should, that should be written into our, yeah, the, the, the lights and the splash lights on the building go off at an hour after closing.
After the store closes.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking we probably need a more detailed motion, and we don't even have a draft one on this. What we could do is vote it at our, vote on a motion at our next meeting, since we have one next week.
Yeah.
And get some of this written in, and make sure we have all of the issues covered.
I mean, I, I think we're, for an agreement, I, I, I think what we'd be talking about doing is allowing the sign on the, on the...
West side.
The west side of the building, as, as is. The LED to be a fixed sign, to not change. To any, any splash light, well, it'd be limited to just splash lighting, the sign not be illuminated in any other way, and that, that any lighting be turned off an hour after closing, you know, be that kind of thing.
Sure. I, I think that that could get me a lease, you know, so...
Yeah, and it certainly isn't in the best interest of, of East Milton and...
It is, and the whole town.
Do you have the building occupied?
Well, an unoccupied building means less revenue for the town as well.
Right. Right, so...
So how do we, where do we go from here?
So we'll put a motion together for the 17th, which is next week. We have a meeting again next Tuesday, and we'll, we'll vote at that.
Just for the record, I, I'll be out of state next week, but what you've described, if it's satisfactory to Jay, sounds, sounds fine.
Okay. All right, so we'll move along those lines?
Yeah.
And make sure we have the terminology down for the lighting and the hours set in place. Yeah.
No, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay.
And I gotta tell you guys, every time I come in here, I'm amazed at how much work you people put into your community. It's just, I'm really impressed.
The crazy people.
Thank you, Jay.
You know, somebody's gotta do it, and the community should be happy to have you guys.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Frank. It was good seeing you again, Frank.
Good to see you, too, Tom.
So we'll address this again on the 17th for the motion. Okay, we're gonna move back to number eight, which is the memorandum of agreement for Granite Ave. Stay up here, Bill. Give us a synopsis of what, what this is all about. Emery gave us a, a good one, but maybe you can elaborate on it.
I didn't watch what she said. What we have is Mass Development sitting at the table with the town's advisory committee. What Mass Development is bringing to the table is their, their expertise on redevelopment, their, their contacts with, with consultants such as Beals and Thomas in this case, who will do streetscapes. They'll use Vanessa Associates for transportation issues to go back and look at the warrants for that site. Will look at whether, as we redevelop the park and ride, we'll look at the other parcel next door to it, which is the Legion Post site. We'll look at the Narrett site, does it work, doesn't it work? Can it, should it all be put together? We're focusing on the park and ride, we're willing to take and look at the other two at the same time, and see if it helps the project at all. We'll look at the warrant issues, you know, if we put in a light, what does, what's that going to cost? What's it going to do to the traffic?
Right.
We'll look at streetscapes to do improvements to the, to the roadway. Right now, it's two lanes in each direction, there are sidewalks up against the, the already curbed, granite curbs. There is no breakdown lane, there's no bike lane. People do ride their bikes from East Milton down to the bike trail, which I wouldn't advise, but people do it. Right now, the, the road is heavily used on the two northbound lanes, primarily in the morning. The southbound lane, even at rush hour in the afternoon, doesn't get that much traffic. So I know that one of the scenarios that I've asked them to look at is two lanes north, one south, and a multi-use path in there that can be used for walking and bikes. That's the one that I've asked them to put in, the rest of it will come from the committee, what they wanna see.
Where does the committee stand at this point, any idea? I mean, are they...
Committee has been taking, looking at what they, they wanted to look at everything. So they've, they've talked about putting in a single-family house, they've talked about leaving it as a parking lot, they've talked about, you know, some people wanted to see it as a solar site, some people wanted to see it as a playground. I think they're going back to the charge and looking at it and saying, "If the property is going to generate taxes, how do we maximize whatever those taxes will be?" They've looked at, could we, should we put in a car dealership? Should we put in something, a retail strip mall? Should we put in a, another restaurant? You know, they've, they've looked at all of these things. They've put in an office building, they put in mixed use, and they're putting that list together. They have taken a few things away, like the solar field. It's three acres, it's not big enough. There's also no very large tenant out there that uses that kind of power, so you can't ship it to a site. Also, the infrastructure in that area isn't capable of carrying that kind of a load back into the grid, so the solar park leaves. A park, the, the traffic down there is brutal. You, you're talking about taking, putting a park right up against the highway. Well, we have other parks in town that we don't have to take and put it up against the highway.
But they're on the highway.
Yeah.
Plus, plus it's, it's not in keeping with the, the charge that committee anyways to make it happen neutral.
I, I agree. So that one has, you know, removed itself. Status quo has not been one of the things that they've looked at, so the parking lot is out. The single-family homes, it just would be a really tough sell between Granite Ave, the Expressway, and the parking, the DPW next door, the, the Mass Highway yard. It just doesn't seem to be conducive to single-family homes. I know that somebody is interested in putting, in assist, you know, talking to the committee about an assisted living on the site. I know that the committee has talked about a center entrance hotel, and I know that some of the neighbors are adamantly opposed to that. All of these things will be discussed, and that entire list will be given over to Mass Development and Beals and Thomas, so that they can run the different scenarios for streetscapes. One of the things about the streetscapes comes down to who can pay for those streetscape improvements. It, it's great to be able to have a Mass Works grant, to be able to go after that, but there's still the component that, some of it you're going to have to be able to pay for, or someone's going to have to pay for. If you put in a, something that, that is going to require a signal light, how do you pay for it? And what are the warrants going to look like? The warrants are, what is a warrant? In order to put in a streetlight, a stoplight, a yield sign, transportation planners look for what are called warrants, or traffic engineers look for warrants, and they make sure, they run those numbers to figure out, can it, should it, does it work? And when I say we're looking at the warrants, it's looking, does that site warrant needing a light?
I have a question. Bill, you mentioned that this, the advisory committee is going to put together a list of potential uses for the engineering consultants.
They've been doing that since they started in April.
Okay, but, so, but nothing has yet been submitted to the engineering consultant, because we haven't, we haven't retained him yet.
Correct.
Should those recommendations be coming to this board before they go to the engineering consultant? Because this is an advisory committee to this board, I mean...
I think it's more they would come afterwards, I mean, these are, these are what, these are the ones that they would like to take and look at. I mean, there's nothing in there that's going to be, I don't think we wanna slow them down at all. There's nothing in there that's going to be... There's nothing that is set in stone that that's what has to go on this site.
Right, cause that's, decision's gonna be made.
And that's not what...
Not just by this advisory committee.
That's not what those proposals would be, but by giving that to the consultant, it also gives you the information back that it fits or it doesn't fit.
So are we talking, there could be 20 uses given to the engineering consultant?
No, there's not that many. Probably, I, I think the list may have 10, but it's listed on a scale that, you know, this one, you know, the pros and the cons. The pros and the cons are what are on the list, and some of them come up with, there are more pros, I think just about every one of them has a con beside it, so they're, they're weighing those things out.
Well, maybe we should just get the list at the same time that the engineering...
I'll send you the list at the same time, right.
...consultant gets the list, that we can at least...
Not a problem.
Be up to date on what they're looking at.
Sure.
And is the idea then that after the engineering consultant looks...
It's going to be an ongoing working group, that the committee will meet with the consultant, and I will be working with Mass Development and Beals and Thomas, so that we have something to give back to the committee.
Right, but I, so when is the, and this committee was appointed before I was elected, so what was the expectation of when this committee would come in with a report of what their...
Spring.
...handful of so many recommended uses might be?
Spring.
Spring. Okay. Then I think so long as we're getting the information contemporaneously with the engineering consultant, then that will probably work, because it's an, it's, obviously it's an advisory committee, and their views are important, but...
It's an advisory committee that doesn't wanna have a, they don't want a long life, they wanna...
Make a decision.
Get it over with, put it in, let's, let's move it on.
But they're preparing to write a report that they'll be giving to us at some point in the spring, okay?
Yes.
And then, we still don't have any idea from the state as to when or whether they're they're gonna surplus the, the land?
Correct.
Okay, so nothing news on that?
No. That we'll have to go back and work with Mr. Joyce.
Okay.
We have a motion here for Emery?
Yeah, I think we're already, I think it was already made, wasn't it?
Hmm, no.
No, I don't think we did.
Number eight. I'll move to authorize the town administrator to sign a memorandum of agreement between the town and Mass Development for planning services at Granite Avenue related to the potential redevelopment of the park and ride lot at this location.
Second.
Motion made, and second, any further comment? On, favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Bill. Number 13, we have town, town administrators report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to remind you and the viewing public that we will on December 16th at 6:30 PM at the senior center. Have Congressman Michael Capuano there to answer questions from the town residents regarding airplane impact on, on the town. I do hope that a lot of people do come out and voice their concerns and.
So that's next Monday, the 16th.
Next Monday, the 16th at 6:30 PM.
At the Council on Aging.
At the Council on Aging. We have sent out public notices to the newspapers, we sent out to our town website, public notices to all of the residents that sign up to receive public notices. And we have it on the red bar section of the town mill website as well.
What do we expect to get from this, uh, get out of this meeting? Capuano's gonna be there.
We expect for, um, he sits on the aviation impact committee, and so we hope that he understands that, you know, Milton fully understands that it does have to have airplane noise over its town. We are the first town south of Boston, but we, we want the pain shared by other communities, and when the wind speed and the knots dictate that the other runways are used, and not just constantly the fours are used, because the fours are faster approaching.
Longer runway and everything else, yeah.
And then the other item I would like to talk about is the amateur gardeners. I'd like to thank them publicly. Every year, they do do a beautiful job decorating the town hall, the police station, and the fire station for Christmas, or for the holiday season. And so if you take a, a look, it, it looks beautiful with the wreaths and the, the garland strung. So I just wanted to publicly thank them as well.
All right. Thank you, Emery, and the chairman's report. I just have a few things to shell out here. On Friday night, Selectmen Conlon and myself attended the Milton Times party at the Common Market to celebrate all the volunteers in town. And a lot of people were there, but the, the, I guess the, is it the volunteer of the year went to Linda Lee Sheridan.
Very welcome.
Well, to the true Miltonian.
The chairman of the, of the school committee, and well deserved.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Yeah, she's a, a great volunteer. Directly after that, we, all three selectmen went to the fireman's ball, is that what you call it?
Yes.
The fireman's ball at Florian Hall. Big crowd was there, and we.
They all attended.
We presented accolades to, I believe, two firemen that have been on the fire department for 30 years.
Yes.
And two for 25 years.
Yeah, right.
It was a great night. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to Fuller Village at 9 o'clock. If you remember, a few weeks ago, I went to the Council on Aging, and I gave, the seniors wanted to hear what's going on in the town. So I went up to the Council on Aging. Well, I'm doing the same thing tomorrow morning at Fuller Village at 9 o'clock, if any of the seniors out there want to attend. And that's it.
Very good.
At this time, I will make a motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, Kevin Mern versus the Town of Milton, and to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. Dear Run Lane Property, believing that having these conversations in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to return to open session to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane, yes. We're in executive session.